Good evening. Welcome to the City of Arcola City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five, beginning at six P M. at our Cola City Hall located at one three two 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 hallway six, Arcola, Texas. Seven seven five eight three for the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas deserves the right to meeting and close session on any of the below items should the need arise under protocol pursuant to authorization Title five, Chapter five five one of the Texas Department Code. It is now six oh one P M. and I call this meeting to order announcing that we do have a quarter. Tonight's invocation will be done by Mayor Protem Burger Abar and will be led by called by the pleaded allegiance by Councilmember Perry.
You bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather here safely tonight. We all have seen how terrible the weather is. Hopefully it will be better when we leave. Anyway, please come into our hearts and our minds and help the city and our council make the best decisions for our city and its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, now we have the roll call. Councilmember Evelyn Dunn.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ray Abar.
Here.
Councilmember Rosemary Bigby.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Frank Burton.
Present.
Also present is David Olson, City Attorney, Amy Flornoy, City Secretary, and Dr. Net Goldberg, City Administrator. Before we get started, I would like for us to take a moment to have a moment of silence for those who are suffering with these Texas floods and those who are missing. Thank you. At this time, Madam Secretary, will you please read the rules of the form, please?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number O dash two zero two five dash zero four dash zero 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 three. Ordinance related to City Council Rules and Procedures. All council members do have this in their binders. Section one, two point zero four zero point zero two zero, City Council Rules and Procedure. Letter D, Order and Decorm. The presided officer will preserve order and decorum preventing the impinging of any members motives or other personal comment not relevant to the orderly conduct of business. The presided officer shall request all speakers to keep comments brief and relevant to the question before the council. In regular meetings, all remarks advised members should be directed to the chair, not to other members. All persons present in the meeting room should issue abusive, rude, or inappropriate conduct for reference, see Chapter thirty eight of the Texas Penal Code regarding the hindering of official proceedings. Number one, no council member shall be permitted to indulge in personality, use the language, personal offensive, impunged motives of members charged deliberate misrepresentation or use language, seeming to hold a member of the City Council up to consent.
And at this time, Madam Secretary, we will move on to public comments. Do we have any general items?
Yes, Mayor. First behalf, Mr. Larry Williams.
Just to let you know that everybody will have three minutes. I'm going to give you a translator, you can last system.
Thanks for the time. Just want to reiterate what the Protem, Mr. Abar just said. The reason we all should be here is for the betterment of our Cola. If we're not here, anybody, whether it be citizens or anyone, we're not here for the betterment of our Cola. There's no reason to even be here. And if you are going to be here to judge someone, judge them by the works that they've done. And I'm not saying, Mayor Williams is my sister. I'm not saying she's perfect. But I do know one thing, there's no one in here that cares about this city more than she does. All of her life she's given to this city, us as growing up and her when she didn't have to, even after she got graduated from college. She didn't have to come back here, she could have went anywhere in the world, but she came back here. So if you don't like her personally, that's one thing, and that's good. But the other thing is, if you're going to judge her for her work and for what she's doing for our Cola, be fair. And just say, is our Cola better today than was, let's just say, seven times years ago? And if it is, we're moving in the right direction. And we know from last year to this year, there's been vast improvements in our Cola. So therefore, if you want to be on the bandwagon, because we all know what's right and we all know what's wrong. We learned that at an early age. If what you're doing is not right for the people of our Cola and the betterment of our Cola, then like I say, if you don't have anything good to say, don't say anything. And that's all I say, because you guys are the face of our Cola. When everybody comes in, they see you. If this group here can't get along, then how can the city get along? Because everyone has to work together. That's how we made it through. And all of us, I would say, are very successful. We're very loving, generous people. If you ask something and we can give it to you, it's given to you. So I know our Cola has the recipe, raising and teaching people the right things to do. I knew it from my twelve as in my family. So if you really want to do us right, then stay on board with our Cola. If you don't intend to do us right, just leave our Cola and go somewhere elsewhere. It's done the way you want it done, because that's not the way we do it in our Cola. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, we have one more, and that would be Mr. Nick Patel.
What do you mean? My problem here with this city of our Cola, that I'm doing a project over there on two ten fourth street. City approved their drawings and everything according to city's requirement. I started cleaning up the property. Mayor sent the police to stop what you go to there. I called the mayor, and mayor said, well, you need to pull the permit. Okay, look at the permit. As of today, they cannot give me the permit, and this is almost one year. So I need to know what's going on here. If you have any problem with me, you tell me now, because that project is delayed for one year and costing me so much money. This is not the only problem I have in the city. I have another problem with the other project too. So you feel, I'm losing a lot of money, okay? I mean, you guys understand or not, but everybody should know that I'm really upset, because what is the problem? Because about two months ago, finally, I have a meeting with my attorney, city attorney, and mayor, and everybody. And then the mayor said, I want to help you. I said, how are you going to help me? And then she is telling me that we don't have capacity. So why you approve those drawings for seventy lot, then you don't have capacity? So what, where do I stand now? I spent so much money over there, and I'm not getting any answer. And I sent many emails to mayor, no response from the mayor. And we talked to the attorney, my, our attorney here explaining the problem, no, that's all for a month ago. I need an answer from you guys. So I need to know that what's going to happen to that.
No, Mayor, that is A.
Okay, you remain for the regular meeting.
No, Mayor.
Okay. At this?
I also want to speak in, because I'm allowed.
Oh, yeah. But can you please announce your name for the record?
Sure, sure. I'm coming out of surprise. I'm Casey Lamb. I am the owner of Arcola Garden across the freeway from you guys. I'm here to make a formal request that I am proposing a win-win situation. I am, been waiting for two year for you guys to extend the water supply system to my apartment so that I can expand the project. I am thinking about, I have drawn plan all this thing already. I'm thinking about to put hundred unit on the three acres. But I cannot do it without your help, because no water, no method. So I am here to make a formal request, and I want to start the discussion with you guys. How are we going to achieve this? Because you guys are the government here, basically. You guys are in charge of the infrastructure here. I'm kind of real curious why they provide us a sewage in their apartment and at the same time they don't do the water? Maybe because of money, maybe because someone's oversight, I do not know. But I'm here to make a request that I want water. So if you guys will, at the end of the meeting, point to me to the right direction to achieve this goal, and I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
City?
No, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, at this time, we'll move on to City Council comments. At this time, according to section five five one, two zero four, one five of the Texas Department Code, City Council of the City of Arcola may receive reports about items of interest from the city and or members of the City Council. No action or possible actions to be taken or discussed concerning that. At this time, Councilmember Debs. No. Councilmember Bigby. Mr. Protem.
No complaints.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes. First of all, I'd apologize to you all for parking lot, which you all had to drive to. Second is that I feel Mr. Patel's pain, might have.
Mr. Burton.
I'm not responding.
Mr. Burton, we can't, I know, but we can't discuss that.
I'm not discussing, I'm making a little bit of a point. Just making a point. I feel, I mean, everybody that comes in that has a complaint or concern. And me being the seat that I sit in, I listen, I'm not responding to them. I'm just speaking on what I just heard. And that's that, there's no cooperation from the city, from the bench. And it should be some cooperation as far as answering emails, phone calls, letters, whatever the case may be. So that being said, we hope we can do better with this particular gentleman and this one as far as, one thing about putting water in the city, it draws a lot of attention. I'm a bee's to honey, that water draws a lot of attention. And that's why you have business people here delayed, trying to do business in the city because of the water. So we have to open up, and we have to be responsive, whether we like the business that they're doing or not. So that's my comment.
I have no comments at this time, so we will move on to the City Council.
Yes, Mayor, we will go to Agenda Item Three, Agenda Three A. Consideration of and possible action on the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty five, and special meeting on Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Bigby, second by Councilmember Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Agenda Item Four, Presentations. This is information only for A, May twenty twenty five and June twenty twenty five permanent monthly report that has been distributed to each council member. You should find that in your binders. Moving to Agenda Item Four B. State Legislative Law Changes on Posting Requirements and Budget. Edward Flornoy, City Secretary. So this is for council as well as department heads to let you all know that recently House Bill one five two two has got, well, will be going into effect on September one of this year. Posting, we will no longer have a seventy-two hour posting timeframe. Now it's just three business days before the date of the meeting, meaning I will have to start asking for documentation or requests earlier than normal. We cannot, we will be posting on Tuesday, the week before. Council, it's pretty much like a week before council for agenda items. So just to let you all know that. And then another change that has happened has been the budget. Now for the budget, when we post, we are now required to provide a physical copy of the budget unless the governmental body has made the budget clearly accessible on the homepage of the governmental body's internet website. So before we can adopt or propose to adopt the budget, we have to post it for the residents to be able to see. So that's all I have.
Come on, you said it great.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Four C, City Engineer Report. Mr. Larry Turner Kaluza E.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
You should have a copy of the report. I will just go through and just highlight some things for you so we can keep the meeting moving as efficiently as possible. The list that's before you now, projects that are ongoing, construction projects. First off is the Arcola Water Plant, which is just over here to the east of us right there. That's the expansion with the two hundred eighty thousand gallon brown storage tank. The contractor has gotten his notice to proceed, and he has started work over there. He's done his some metals, and the project is scheduled to be completed the first quarter of twenty twenty six. Next project that we have going on is the wastewater treatment plant expansion number two. That's that four hundred fifty thousand gallon wastewater treatment plant expansion. That is under construction. Contractor's just started on that. They actually installed a culvert to help drain that side right there at the entrance road of the wastewater treatment plant. That one is expected to be completed in June of twenty twenty six. The next one is the Sanjay Sewer Evaluation and Rehab. That's what we're doing, the monitoring of the sanitary sewer system, which is all part of that SSO. Same thing we've been talking about for the last couple of months now. And all of those are ongoing construction projects. We also have our Cola roadway drainage improvements. Those are projects where we're going in and basically cleaning out road ditches throughout various locations throughout the community. They finished up, this is just the road ditches, because there are some culverts that they've cleaned out, but there are some culverts that's been identified that needs to be replaced because of elevation differences. And so, but right now, we're just trying to get the ditches clean and doing as much as we possibly can as it relates to that particular project. They've just finished up Compton, and the next roadways that they'll be working on is Sears, I'm sorry, Sears and North Street, if my memory serves me correctly. And McKeever. And West Plantation, thank you. Projects that are currently under design, we have the wastewater permit to the ultimate size, which is the four point one expansion. That's still at T C E Q. I have no time on that, because that's out of our control. That's what they say is what we do. The lift station rehab number three in North Pine Street, that's a project that's actually on a later agenda item. Where we've gone in, we've opened up bids on it, we've made a recommendation of who you should award the contract to. Hopefully, once that's resolved tonight on who we're going to award, the contractor will start within the next thirty or forty-five days. I'll leave that one at that point, because that is an agenda item for discussion. The relocation of public infrastructure within five twenty-one, that's for the five twenty-one widening, that's still in the design phase right now. And we've just kicked off expansion number three, which takes it from one point four to one point eight at the wastewater treatment plant. That concludes my report. I'll entertain any questions that you may have of me as it relates to this item or anything that's associated with my engineering report. All right, I'll sit back down. Thank you very much.
Agenda Item Four D, State of the City. Mayor Vida B. Williams.
So just wanted to, as alluded to a minute ago, just let everybody know that our parking lot will be rehab late, mid to late August of this year. We will not have to pay the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that was proposed previously. Fort Ben County Road and Bridge will be providing this rehab for forty thousand dollars. And so we're able to have significant savings in that, in that, on that project. So that'll be coming, like I said, right now, we're trying to wait until the summer program is done and also to give them a little time to, some other things that they have to do in it to prep that parking lot before it's done. The other thing I want to acknowledge, and our chief, Chief Carr was given, received a proclamation, a Juneteenth proclamation from Judge K. P. George for her work as being, where her work down here is chief, but not only that, being the first African-American chief in Fort Ben County. So thanks, Chief, I appreciate all that you do. Also, just want to let you all know that our Cola will have its first ever wellness park coming to the city, only where the food truck park has been. We have had some conceptual designs, we have some outside funding for this, and basically, it's just a place, you know, all we're trying to do in here is to increase and enhance the quality of living for our residents. We'll have the food truck, we'll have the food trucks, that place will be really, it's going to be made really nice. We have some nice eating seating places. We're going to have some outdoor exercise area, I know, right? Exercise area. We will be having a Serenity Garden, also a Community Garden. This is going to be a place where people could come over there. Sometimes we might have live music over there, may have yoga over there. It's all focused on well, health and wellness, and also on healthy cooking demonstrations and stuff like that. So it'll be something to come out and just chill out and celebrate. Making our Cola a destination city, because there's nowhere else around to have that type of wellness park. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you to all of y'all who came out for the Fourth of July celebration. It was really cool, it was really good, had a great time out there. Much better than last year, I'll say, because we had a lot more fireworks to work with and everybody out there really enjoyed it. And there are some people here I see that was there. And so that, you know, I'm looking forward to, the next one is the cultural, the cultural festival. And it's going to be another great event where people live in, come together, and bring the city together, all, you know, everybody. Just come out and have a lot of fun together, so. And as you know, we received our certificates of obligation this week. Oh, my. So we have the largest capital improvement project that's going to be going on in the City of Arcola that we have ever had here in the city. And thank you, council, thank you, staff, everybody. You know, we had some other projects that really worked with us, thank customer, that really worked with us to help bring this to fruition. And I just want to say thank you to the City of Arcola for trusting the vision that we have going forward. And it is going to be to improve the quality of life in the city, whether it's streets. There are some areas in the city that never has had a significant investment. And now we're going to be able to make that investment in the city, and so looking, so looking forward to that. We're going to be having a dinner and dialogue town hall meeting coming up, where we want the residents to come out. Let us know what some of your concerns are. This is the time to be included in this capital improvements project. And so I'm looking forward to that. Drainage over in Fort Ben County matter. Mr. Turner's already talked about that. We are moving forward, there are some other areas in the city also that need to deal with some drainage. And we are going to be addressing all those areas as they come, you know, as we go out and kind of identify them. So just know that there are lots of things that are coming to the city. Also, in Road, you know, that subdivision is going to be moving along. Part of the reason why we were able to get this, the COs, and not only, initially, we had an A credit rating, but we ended up with a double A credit rating, was because of the new development over here. It provides us some revenue that's coming in, that's going to be able to fund these things going forward. And then with the additional community coming on down in Road, then we'll be able to have even additional revenue coming into the city. So really looking forward to seeing what the city does going forward. So I could go on, but I'm going to put a pin in it right there, so that we can move this meeting along. But just know that we're looking forward to some great things in this city.
We are now moving to Agenda Items. Five, Regular Agenda Items. All items under Regular Agenda Items are up for discussion, consideration, and possible action. Five A, Actions to Approve the May twenty twenty five Municipal Operations and Consourcing Report. Mr. Roland Leal.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Y'all should have a copy of your operator's report in front of you. We're looking at billing period for June the twenty-five. We had a total of one thousand and nine total connections, with forty-four of those being vacant. Our total sewer connections with one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two, five hundred and seventy-eight of those being from Freshwater One. Just below are well pumped seven million one hundred and thirty-six thousand, and billed was six million seven hundred and sixteen thousand, which put us at a ninety-four accountable. To the right is your June delinquent accounts. We have for water and sewer eighty-seven accounts, for sewer only forty-eight. Just to give you an idea of what you're actually looking at, in March, we had eighteen cutoffs. In April, we had twenty cutoffs, and in May, twenty-six cutoffs. I know those numbers look big, but in reality, they come down at the end. And we have not had any sewer plugged during this. Just below your revenue total is a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-three with ninety-eight cents. And just below your wastewater treatment plant is operating at forty-four percent permitted capacity, twenty-eight of that being City of Arcola, sixteen percent being Freshwater One. The sewer plant has been sampled and in compliance. If you turn your page, we're looking at your wastewater treatment plant operations at a daily. You have three that are highlighted, your total gallons, which is what is produced per day by the plant. You just add three zeros to that number, and it'll give you how many gallons that was for that day. And then second is your chlorine residual, and then to the far and the fresh waters gallons that they give to the plant. And just below, we're looking at your total flow for gallons, which is twelve million eight hundred and forty-two, with two hundred and sixty-seven gallons that passed through the plant. Once again, the plant was operating at forty-one percent. If you turn your page, we're looking at your DMR. This is what was sampled at the plant. The main component that I always look at is your Ecolite, third from the bottom. Once again, we're at one point oh, well below what is, is put aside per minute, so the plant is in good shape there as well. That's all I have for y'all on the operating report, unless y'all have a question for me.
So you said it just had water for water connections to the vacant?
Say again.
To the vacant, say it. Water for water, connect, water connections.
Water connections, the vacant ones. The vacant ones, yeah, we have forty-four vacant.
Seems like last month, month or last year, I had a hundred and fourteen, something like that. I mean.
I don't remember it being inside, I have to, I have it.
I get, I get.
Roland, I think, I think, I think it's different between how many connections we have as opposed to how many vacant, those are vacant by.
Yeah, those are vacant. Yeah, those are vacant, they could be.
What's the availability?
Um, the availability, you mean how many that are open for the residents? I would have to probably look at that because I, I can't.
That's not a new report, that would be.
That don't be on the, on the?
No, sir. Because that's all, the availability is, is based on the capacity at the plant. Obviously, it's, it's changed, but also with the sewer as well. With there not being any sewer, it's kinda hard to say there's availability for water because water and sewer are gonna run hand in hand. When you turn on your faucet, it's gotta go.
We had capped, we capped out at sewer.
Yes, sir.
So, we don't know what the availability of water is.
Yeah, that, I'm pretty sure.
So, we can't give out any connections for water at this time because there isn't, so I get that.
Yes, sir.
But there is forty-four, or you don't know, I mean.
Forty-four vacant can be homes that still have.
Yeah, I get that, but there is some. There are some availability, we just don't know what that number is, right?
They're all about hundred connections, Roland.
Yeah, there's probably, yeah, there's probably plenty of connections, that ain't, that isn't the problem, it's just gonna run hand in hand with your sewer. Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Roland? Can I understand a motion please?
I have a motion to approve the municipal operations in the court and run, uh, June.
So, move.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Burton, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
And that's gonna be with the change, correct, uh, from May to June. Agenda item five C, uh, financial report for May twenty twenty-five, daughter Anette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you the bookkeeper's reports, I'll start with that. As you know, we have five checking accounts. We also have seven savings account and tax pool. So collectively, at the end of April thirtieth, we had nine million five hundred and thirty-five thousand and twenty-three dollars. As you can see, the end of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, we had nine million one hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. You can see there is a decrease of four hundred and two thousand three hundred and three. That is primarily due to the purchase of the land for the wastewater expansion treatment plant that we did. The good news is, I was on the phone with Commissioner Press's office and the check is in the mail. Because we will get reimbursed for the land purchase that we had. And so, we should get it on or before July thirteenth. Moving on to general fund. I, uh, would direct you to page two. You will see the total revenue for the month of May. The actual revenue received for the month of May is two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars versus budget at three hundred and eighty-nine thousand sixty dollars. Year-to-date revenue, which includes October twenty-four through May twenty-fifth, twenty-five, I should say, the actual receipt is three million four hundred and five thousand and thirty-two dollars versus budget at three million one hundred and twelve dollars four hundred and seventy-nine. You can see, we exceeded our revenues compared to our budget. I then will refer to you to the total expenditures on page four at the bottom. For the month of May, the actual expenditures for three hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars versus our budget at three hundred and eighty-nine thousand and sixty dollars. Year-to-date for total expenditures, that includes October through May, actual is two million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand fifty-five dollars versus our budget at three million one hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. For the month of May, our net revenue is negative eighty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. But if you look at the year-to-date, we're at a positive of six hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Again, that's our net revenue for general fund. Moving over to enterprise. Uh, I would direct you to the total gross revenue received for the month of May is a hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars versus our budget at two hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. Year-to-date for enterprise, which includes October through May, our actual revenues received is three million three hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars versus our budget at two million three hundred and forty thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. As you can see, we have exceeded our revenues year-to-date compared to our budget. I then refer to you to the next page, our total expenditures for the month of May is seventy-eight thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars versus our budget at two hundred and one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Year-to-date ex- total expenditures is one million four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars versus year-to-date of one million six hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Our net revenue for the month of May is fifty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. And our net revenue year-to-date is one million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and two dollars. And that concludes my report, Mayor and Council.
Council, do you have any questions on the, um, financial report?
Make a motion that we approve the financial report. Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this budget, uh, we just got it today, right? We just got it, Council, today.
What's that?
We just got this budget today, as.
The report?
Yes.
I'm not gonna, and I just wanna go over, I don't have time in three minutes that she did, what she did, now we wanna go on. I just wanna go through it. And I think we can take this budget to the next meeting, then we go on again. I mean, I just, it's a lot. I just wanna go through it, I mean. And Greg, I can get with you and we can sit down and go, you know.
I've gone through the, the numbers in detail, 'cause I got it back on Friday. 'Cause I worked with the bookkeeper every minute to make sure that everything's done correctly. And all, and all the numbers, you know, in my estimation are accurate.
I trust, it's okay.
So, I agree with you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, May two thousand twenty-five, uh, financial report.
Certainly. Motion has been made to approve the budget for May twenty twenty-five by Councilmember Abar, second by Councilmember Bigby. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr.?
Let me, let me get a roll call.
Fred, I would be happy to sit down.
I will, but I'm.
Let me get a roll call, uh, Councilmember Jackson.
I'll be happy to go over.
Um, approved, Councilmember Bigby. Councilmember, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Proton, Abar.
Agreed.
Councilmember Jones.
They have this done.
Motion is passed, thank you, Mayor.
Agenda item five C. To approve payments to block safety for block cameras in the amount of seventeen thousand, seventy thousand dollars general fund and reimbursement of fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars by the Motor Vehicle Crime Provision Authority, uh, Police Chief Carr Bryant.
Good evening, Council. Um, this was first brought to you back in December, um, of last year. It was a grant that we were approved for to get flock cameras in this city. Um, we were just recently told that we have to make the payment upfront and they will reimburse us the fourteen thousand. So, it was asked for approval to make that payment so we can get our reimbursement back for the cameras.
Can I understand a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of the flock cameras for the amount of seventeen thousand.
Seven. Motion has been made by Mayor Proton, Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Agenda item six, plans, plaques, and permits. All items are up for discussion, consideration, and possible action. Six A, um, to accept the final plaque for Lawson Estate, um, City of Arcola, Fort Bend County, Texas, Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza E.
You should have a copy of that plaque before you. Uh, Lawson Estate is a residential development that consists of seven point zero zero nine acres. It's on Lawson Road, to kinda give you a physical description. If you went five twenty-nine, five twenty-one south and make a right going south on Finn Road, go all the way to the very end, dog leg left, or left turn and then right turn, it's kinda out there in that area right there. Uh, what they're doing is dividing that seven acres into four tracks. This is not in the city limits of Arcola, this is in your ETJ. But as part of the plating rules, if something's in your ETJ, it has to go through the city, just like we do with Glendale Lakes and all those other areas that are in your ETJ. Uh, but it goes through the county and to us as well. These size tracks will be on well and septic, again, because they're in the ETJ. Um, I've reviewed the plaque, I've made some, uh, modifications. They've gotten a list of it. Uh, there's nothing major on it, they're mostly clerical type areas and minimum things that we require on a subdivision plan. Uh, staff recommends approval of this plaque, subject to the memo that was sent to them as well. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions anyone have of me as it relates to this particular plaque.
Does Andy, Kate, Lawrence, want to take?
It's residential.
Residential.
Residential lots, they're four residential lots. And looking at the way it is, uh, I believe they may have, uh, 'cause there's several different owners, four different individual owners. So, what probably has happened is, uh, over the years, uh, they call them ri- uh, red flag subdivisions. People will sell lots by meets and bounds, but they never get, uh, filed as a subdivision plant until you wanna get a building permit. And then when you get ready to get a building permit, county calls them to the car, but it says, hey, look, you need to platter. And so, I'm gathering, just from the history of it and the fact that I got four different owners, uh, this is kinda what has happened right here. Someone's wanting to build and they're like, we gotta platter the whole thing and that triggers all of us having to come, having to come before you from this body right now.
What's the approximate size of each lot?
Each lot is one, what, you know, bring that back? They have, uh, one point, it ranges from one point four to one point eight acres. And they're approximately a hundred and seventy-nine feet wide by four hundred and sixty-two feet deep. And one of the things that's required when they're going to the county, we don't require it, but the county will, they'll have to go through environmental health. When they go through environmental health, they'll actually ask them to, would give them a plan that shows them how they're gonna potentially lay out their well and septic. Because they wanna make sure it's laid out in such a manner that your well has to be so many feet from somebody's septic system. And so, what they've, they've wised up over the years is they ask for that so that way, when someone comes in, uh, to the county, if they won't come to us, we won't be permitting anything. But when it goes to the county, uh, they'll make sure that their plan for the well and septic is in conformance with the layout that was submitted with the plaque. That way, there's not a, an issue with regards to putting a water well or septic out there. Any other questions for me?
Make a motion that we approve the plaque for Lawson Estates.
Certainly. Motion has been made by Mayor Proton, Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr.?
Agenda item, state of contracts and agreements. All, all agenda items are up for discussion, consideration, and possible action. Seven A, to approve a contract with Fresno Fence, Inc., for security fence for employee parking in the amount of twenty-four thousand twenty dollars general fund and security fund, Police Chief Carr Bryant.
Good evening, Council, again. Um, this is for updates to, um, designate public areas and also to the work of our employee parking and our police, um, vehicle parking from outside visitors or the public going back there to access those areas.
This will be done after we finish with the drive, right?
It will not, um, affect the drive because it will be to the back.
To, to the back of it.
Yes. So, the front parking, it won't affect any of that.
Do you have any questions, Chief?
Will Council have access?
That will be up to the mayor and our security plan. That's not something that we have discussed.
Will Council have access to the building as of yet?
Council does not have access to this now.
So, once the principal is up in Council, just parks with, I guess, we just determined probably two, and that's no problem.
That's where Council parks now. Council doesn't, we rarely have Council that parks in the back.
How much did we spend on the security around the building so far, the bit, the, the county system?
I want to know how they get that number, Council. I had to get that thing before you, I don't know, I have to talk to my head.
'Cause right now, we got pad access, we have. And I seen, they seen good stuff on the beach, it's one we used to come with the building, right?
The camps, yes.
Right. And the reason we're at this fence is because we saying we getting people walking, walking, or we getting, or they breaking in, or tell them, find out who did we see on camera?
That have walked in.
Yes, we don't have access to it because we don't have, not saying designated public area by law, they are able to access that area. And it's not only, it's a safety concern.
Any other questions, Council?
I make a motion that we approve the, um, contract for Fresno Fence for the, um, twenty-four thousand twenty dollars for security fencing of the employee parking.
Motion has been made by Mayor Proton, Abar, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. You have one, then. Okay. Know that, uh, they've, make sure you know that Councilmember Burton. Motion is passed.
Agenda item. Sorry. Seven B. To accept the recommendation of the city engineers to award a con- construction contract for the rehabilitation lift station number three and the replacement of four hundred fifty linear of twelve-inch sanitary sewer along North Pine to CFG Industries LLC in the amount of two hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred sixty dollars enterprise fund, Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza E.
Aye. Last item for me tonight. Uh, this is the lift station number three rehab, uh, that we've talked about. We went through the, the bidding process, we've had several contractors come out, look at the site, look at the lift station. And we actually got three actual contractors to submit bids. Uh, the bids came in good, uh, they were all within the realm of, of each other right there. Uh, CFG Industries, they came in as a low bidder with two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, uh, with a total number of seventy-five calendar days. Uh, we didn't find any errors right there with them. And so, our recommendation is to award the contract to CFG Industries LLC if this council so desires. And just to kinda refresh everybody's memory, this is that lift station that even when it's dry, it's taking on groundwater right now. So, we're paying just to treat Mother Nature, and so, we really need to, to get this moving. If this council so desires to, uh, go with the recommendation, uh, the plan of action would be, uh, getting a, a pre-construction, uh, within the next two weeks and then during that time, determine when we do it in order to proceed so we can get the contractor out there to work on this project.
How many bids did you make?
Three bids, actual submit, three.
How much higher would?
And you should have on a recommendation, the low bid was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five sixty. The second low bidder was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And then the highest bidder was three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, uh, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and zero cents. And that's in that package, in our recommendation included. Any other questions for me?
When do you, when do you, I do, when do you, we just anticipate? When do you, when do you, I do, when do you, we anticipate after the contractors and what is the work for?
So if the contract is awarded tonight, if this council so desires, we would try to set up a, uh, pre-construction meeting within the next two weeks. And then at that time, we would establish with the contractor, you know, because he's got to have his bonds and everything in place, when we would do a notice to proceed. So before the next council meeting, I would hope that we've started construction.
Okay.
So how long will it take?
Seventy-five days. Yes, ma'am.
Does the weather have anything to do with it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you get a hurricane coming here, everybody sits down.
I just mean rain like we got now.
Uh, so it, it, it does, yes, it does play a factor because, I mean, it depends upon how much water, because they'll have to bypass pump. But yes, weather does play into a factor there. Yes, ma'am.
What does it go up? The price, the price can?
Oh, no, the price is set. No, no, when we enter a contract, it's set.
Because sometimes if you take longer, they say, well.
Well, if they take longer, we can call liquidated damage. But no, generally, most of the time, I would say probably with ninety-eight percent of the contractors we ever deal with, we never have to really get to that level. Because we're standing there watching them and making sure that, and we talked about all that during the pre-construction. You know, they, if they want to have a claim for delays or something, they have X amount of days to make sure that you tell us, but if not, you waive those claims for delay. Any other questions for me?
Make a motion that we, um, award the contract for a lift station number three to CFG Industries for the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Abar, second by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you.
I should have made this, um, announcement early, and I was beginning, Councilmember Burton had, you know, mentioned this yesterday. At this time, we're going to move whole session up, and, uh, we will then reconvene into regular session to discuss the rest of the items on the table. So at this time, Chief, if y'all can, uh...
Okay, I make a motion that we change the, probably closes that group session up until, is it, uh, number eight, and then we'll come back.
Okay. It is now seven forty-four P M. We will reconvene back into regular session. Um, at this time, what we'll do is, um, let, let me just take for the record, uh, under item eight A, no action will be taken on this item, so that will be pulled from the agenda. And moving on to item B, this is.
Agenda item eight, Councilmember Agenda Request, discussion, consideration of impossible action to approve an ordinance for authority to terminate police officers, um, Councilmember Fred Burton.
The reason I, uh, this ordinance, I wanted to put it in, because I don't think the police department's been fed with a lot of these authorities. And, uh, the way I look at it, there have been too much turnover in the police department since the day that, uh, this mayor took over. And, uh, I believe that sometimes we get a little power strictly, and that we, we use that power in a negative way. Power will help, help, help with our, in their corruption, and I believe this ordinance is something that I believe in all the terminate officers going forward is that they need to come before this council. Because when you leave it up to one individual, and they has jury, jury and execution are all in their hands, then I think they need to come before this council. That's why I would like to add this ordinance. And a motion to bring this ordinance into, this is.
Is that? There's your motion?
Yes.
Motion has been made, this motion has been made by Councilmember Burton to, um, approve an ordinance of authority to terminate police officers by this council. Is there a second? Anybody second?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Motion failed.
It's not even the motion failed, it just, the motion dies because nobody seconded it.
Okay, um, item C.
Eight C, discussion, consideration of impossible action to approve an ordinance for authority to eliminate or defund positions, Councilmember Fred Burton.
This is ordinance that, uh, I believe that certain positions need to be eliminated and are defunded because those positions never came before council. And there was something that, uh, I guess the mayor figured that she needed to do to bring somebody on board, and I believe this ordinance, from now on, that, uh, this ordinance need to be brought before council, and we need to eliminate and define certain positions.
Is your motion?
That's my motion.
Uh, motion has been made by Councilmember Burton to, um, approve an ordinance for authority to eliminate or def, defund positions. Now I give a second. Is there a second?
No second.
So.
Motion has died for lack of a second. As for as, um, other matters coming out of the executive, executive session, um...
Yeah.
Do I just?
No, Mayor, I think. I think it's up to council whether they want to instruct staff to bring back any resolutions.
I make a motion that we authorize attorney to put together a resolution about our poll citizen pay.
Well.
Would that, would that one would run out?
Not really. I mean, one of the things we talked about is the first amendment dealing with that. So we're really talking about the actions of the council.
Let's get it. Okay. I make a motion that we put together a resolution about the conduct of city council members and what they can, cannot focus on.
So, okay, so that's a motion. Really, what was suggested, if you wanted to do anything, would be a motion authorizing staff to put together a resolution of censorship.
Okay, make a motion for, put together the censorship of a council member, then I need.
Okay. Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones to put together an ordinance of censorship. Um, is there a second? Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Bigby. I'm going to take a roll call vote. All in, I'll say all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So I'm going to take a roll call, just to ensure. Uh, Councilmember.
Jackson?
Councilmember Bigby? Uh, Councilmember Jones, and Mayor Pro Tim Abar?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
There are four I's, one A's. The, the motion passes.
Mayor, I, I don't think there's any other necessary action coming out of executive session. We have the direction we need at this time.
I make a motion for me to adjourn.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Abar, second by Councilmember Jones for adjournment at seven fifty P M. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?